Good morning. We're going to get started. Thank you. We have a quorum, and we will get started. We will start with our invocation. In the invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Douglas Carpenter of Philadelphia Prayer, Praise and Worship Center Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Vaughn. I would ask all members, guests, and visitors to please rise. Pastor.
Good morning to each of you, and Council President Clark, Councilwoman Vaughn, thank you for this privilege. Lord God our Father, we have been instructed in the Bible to pray for those who have charge over us and for those who have responsibility for us. We come today, oh God, praying for city council, every councilperson, their families, their staff, and their constituents, and all that they have been elected, selected, and appointed to do. Give them the wisdom, the courage, the love, the mercy, the grace, to be able to legislate and implement what is needed to be a blessing to the citizens and to the city of Philadelphia. God, as they handle their assignments, please allow them to be able to develop plans and ideas to address the issues and the complexities of inclusivity and diversity, the challenges of safety and security. God, we pray that you empower them to be effective and equitable in all that they do, and that by working together is a win-win for all of us here in the city of Philadelphia. Bless this election, oh God, and the next mayor's administration. We ask all these things for your glory, and in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Pastor, thank you so much for your invocation. We really appreciate it. Council will be at ease. Again, thank you, Pastor. Thank you so much for your spiritual guidance this morning. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 20th, 2023, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 20th, 2023 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 20th, 2023 stand approved. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and our journal is approved. And our next order of business is a request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there is a request for leave of absence from Member Brooks.
Thank you, Councilman. Let the record reflect that Councilwoman Brooks has been granted a leave of absence. The Chair recognizes Councilman Schoiler, who, Councilwoman Bass, for motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the legislative matters stated by Councilwoman Bass may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of the council session. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion passes. And our next order of business is communications, and I would ask the clerk to please read the messages from the mayor and any other communication that he may have in his possession today.
To the President and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, pursuant to sections 4604 and 2307 of the Hallmark Charter, I am today transmitting to the council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 230273 and 230276. And I am pleased to advise you that on April 25, 2023, I signed all the bills which were passed by council at its session on April 13, 2023, and I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 759, 761, 763, 773, 779, and 783 Palace Street and 4041 Cambridge Street located in the 3rd Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 815 West First Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1739, 19 Fifth Street, 1919 South Sixth Street, 2612 South Ninth Street, 411, 418, 424, 432 through 34, 624 and 626 Cantrell Street, 424 and 426 Mercy Street located in the 1st Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Housing Authority a deed conveying fees simple title to 2338 North 31st Street, 2340 North 31st Street, 2408 North 31st Street, 2410 North 31st Street, 2412 North 31st Street, 2500 North 31st Street, 2401 North 32nd Street, 2549 and 1/2 North 32nd Street, also known as 2551 North 32nd Street, 3230 through 38 Diamond Street, 3010 West York Street, 3012 West York Street, 3014 West York Street, 3013 West York Street, 3015 West York Street, 3108 West York Street, 3110 West York Street, 3112 West York Street, 3200 West York Street, 3202 West York Street, 3204 West York Street, 3206 West York Street, 3214 West York Street, 3222 West York Street in the 5th Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 621, 623, 625, 637, 917 Diamond Street, 924, 927, 928, 936 Edgely Street, 926, 928 Front Street, 2106, 2112, 2140, 2141, 2142, 2143, 2151, 2166, 2170, 2172, 2215, 2217, and 2219 North Franklin Street, 2112, 2130, 2144, and 2214 North Marshall Street, 2105, 2107, 2109, 2110, 2111, 2112, 2113, 2119, 2121, 2123, 2140, 2143, 2146, and 2150 North Percy Street, 904, 910, 912 West Huskine Avenue, 2102, 2109, 2114, 2126, 2128, 2130, 2131, 2134, 2135, 2136, 2150, 2210 North Seventh Street, 2101, 2113, 2121, 2125, 2167 through 69, 2201 North Eighth Street, 2224, 2226, 2132, 2150, 2165 North Ninth Street, 2121 North Tenth Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2148, 2150, 2154, 2156 East Birch Street, 2032 East Lehigh Avenue, 2055, 2057 East Rush Street, 2154, 2155, 2156, 2157, 2158, 2159, 2160, and 2161 East Tuller Street located in the 1st Councilmanic District, and a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter to provide for the creation of an office of people with disabilities, to provide for the powers and duties of such office, to eliminate a duplicative office, and to otherwise provide for incorporation of the office into the city government and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia, and a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fees simple titled to 268 Diamond Street in the 7th Councilmanic District, and an ordinance authorizing the Procurement Commissioner to enter into a contract for the construction of a sewer and a pertinent work required to provide public sewer service at 1200 in the 1200 block of North New Kirk Street, and an ordinance authorizing the Procurement Commissioner to enter into a contract for the construction of sewer and a pertinent work required to provide public sewer service in the 2900 block of Waterloo Street, and an ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia. Other proposals set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter to provide for the creation of an office for people with disabilities, to provide for the powers and duties of such office, to eliminate a duplicative office, and to otherwise provide for the incorporation of the office into the city government, and an ordinance authorizing the Northern Liberties Business Improvement District to own, operate, and maintain certain lighting encroachments along the 400 and 500 blocks of Second Street in the city of Philadelphia, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Seems like a lot of activity that will be happening very shortly. Thank you. Thank you. That concludes our communications, and our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and I would ask the clerk to please read the titles of the legislations that's being offered today by our members.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers a privileged resolution authorizing hearings in the Committee on the Environment to evaluate the environmental justice impacts of the city's waste management practices and potential alternatives to the city's contract with Covanta Delaware Valley LP.
Today's calendar.
Councilman Thomas offers three resolutions entitled a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating the champions of the week, the students of Northeast High School who established Afro Day when students wear their hair naturally to eliminate the historical stigmas associated with black hair.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings investigating the use of an independent authority to bond and manage the school facilities' modernization that's safety calls for and students, parents, teachers, and communities deserve.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. First and foremost, good morning to everybody, good morning to the listening public. We have some very special guests here who I'm going to talk about a little bit later. They're also going to testify, and that's some amazing students from Northeast High School. So I'm looking forward to hearing from them and to talk about them a little bit later. But I did want to make a few remarks about, first and foremost, we have the PIM relays happening. Want to give a shout out to all of the folks who made that great event happen. Whenever we could have young people involved in positive activity, as well as people coming to our city, that's a dual win for us here in the city of Philadelphia. But thinking about those same young people who are involved in extracurricular activities, the facilities that they're in and the schools that they go to, it's no secret to the people in the city of Philadelphia that we have some issues. This week, we introduced a resolution to begin the conversation around what does it look like to have a separate entity whose focus on the facilities crisis that we're facing, not only collect the dollars, but implement the plan that we come up with to address our facilities. Council President, I want to thank you for your leadership as it relates to this idea because between you and former Councilwoman Maria Sanchez, this seed was planted long before I even thought about this initiative. So I don't want to make it seem like this is my idea, but I think it's the right idea. So your leadership and former Councilwoman Sanchez's leadership is what got us to this point where we have this concept, and I'm hoping that the conversation signals to Harrisburg, right, that we need as much dollars as they're willing to give us to address the facilities crisis, and every dollar that they give us will be spent on our schools. Thank you, Council President, and thank you colleagues for supporting this resolution.
Thank you, Councilmen. Councilwoman Sanchez and I had a conversation, and we agreed that we would hand it off to you because you would do the work. But also, actually, last night I had the pleasure of being with the legislator, PA legislator at the Links, and they asked me about the proposal, and they sounded like it could be an exciting concept. So we were clearly, you know, with your leadership, start the dialogue to make sure that we can get the appropriate resources, to make sure that whatever we ultimately end up with take place. So thank you. Thank you for your leadership, Councilman. That will be on today's calendar.
Councilman Thomas also offers a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the many public servants of the city of Philadelphia and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and declaring May 2023 Public Service Month in the city of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar.
Councilman Jones offers three bills and one resolution. On behalf of Council President Clark, an ordinance to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by revising certain provisions of Chapter 14, 500, entitled overlay zoning districts by creating the EOD East Poplar Overlay District.
Next week's calendar.
And on his own behalf, Councilman Jones offers an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by revising Section 14, 524, entitled FDO 4th District Overlay District to extend the boundaries of certain areas, and an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on the westwardly side of Belmont Avenue between Monument Road and Concha Hakan Avenue.
Further, the committee.
And a non-privileged resolution calling on the Pennsylvania House of Representatives to pass House Bills 338, 714, 731, and 1018, which address reasonable firearms restrictions that will enhance the safety of all Pennsylvanians and Philadelphians.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to applaud the state House delegation for passing out those four bills addressing sensible gun laws. That was a historic undertaking, and yes, it has a long way to go. It has to get through the Senate and to Governor Shapiro's desk, who is waiting for that type of sensible gun legislation. But I just want to thank them for beginning the journey of a thousand miles with the first steps. I want to also recognize my colleagues here because a lot of those sensible gun resolutions and laws started here, whether we talk about ghost guns and the Committee to Deal with Gun Violence chaired by my colleague Johnson. We started that in 2020. Lost and Stolen was passed in 2019. The primary sponsor was Member Miller, who is no longer with us, but left her mark with lost and stolen guns, which are now being considered by the Pennsylvania courts. So it is pleasing to me to see that we are beginning to be synchronous with the state on what our ambitions and aspirations for our city to keep in sync. Also, red flag laws started here and spread up to Harrisburg and Biden. So thank you, Governor Shapiro, for your budget address that called for these kinds of legislations. Thank you, Member Cephas, for bringing it into action and passing it out of the House. But our work is not done, guys, and we need to hold feet to the fire and people accountable about the senseless, senseless gun violence in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Lozado offers one bill and one resolution, entitled an ordinance authorizing the Procurement Commissioner to enter into a contract for the construction of a sewer and a pertinent work required to provide public sewer service in the 2900 block of Waterloo Street.
Further, the committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fees simple titled to 268 Diamond Street in the 7th Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gardier offers two bills and one resolution, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 14, 500 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled overlay zoning districts to modify the area subject to Section 14, 534, entitled AHB Affordable Housing Preservation Overlay District.
Further, the committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 14, 533 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled MIN Mixed Income Neighborhoods Overlay District to create a mechanism for satisfying certain use standards related to the construction of affordable housing in the portion of the MIN Overlay District located in the 3rd Councilmanic District.
Further, the committee.
And a non-privileged resolution renaming the 6,000 block of Locust Street Martha Green Way.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Driscoll offers an ordinance officially renaming and designating Bridesburg Park located at 3101 Orthodox Street as the city of Philadelphia, in the city of Philadelphia, as Robert A. Borski Park.
Further, the committee.
Councilman O'Neill offers on behalf of Council President Clark a non-privileged resolution adopting the report issued by Council's Special Committee on Retention and Recruitment of Municipal Workers.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Schoiler offers two bills and four resolutions, entitled an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of pedestrian light poles with accompanying LED luminaires and concrete planter boxes in the vicinity of 1325 North Beach Street.
Further, the committee.
And an ordinance authorizing Northern Liberties Business Improvement District to own, operate, and maintain certain lighting encroachments along the 400 and 500 blocks of Second Street in the city of Philadelphia.
Further, the committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to conduct hearings regarding supplier diversity initiatives, including Philadelphia anchors for growth and equity.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution welcoming the Golden Rule Peace Boat to Philadelphia. The Golden Rule Peace Boat is a sailing vessel that is touring the U.S. to promote the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons.
This week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2148, 2150, 2154, and 2156 East Birch Street.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1739 South Fifth Street and 1919 South Sixth Street, 2612 South Ninth Street located in the 1st Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Bass offers an ordinance authorizing the installation, ownership, and maintenance of encroachments in the vicinity of 3500 Broad Street.
Further, the committee.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and our next order of business is reports from committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gardier for the report from the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless reports two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless, to which is referred Bill Number 221017, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 7, 200 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Preservation of Affordable Housing to modify certain requirements that must be met before a change in ownership, other disposition, or other change in property interest occurs with respect to certain affordable housing properties. And Bill Number 221018, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 7, 200 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Preservation of Affordable Housing to provide for a city directory of affordable housing subsidies and their duration. Respectful reports that is considered and amended the same, and returns attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gardier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 221017 and 221018.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 221017 and 221018. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. The Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for a report from the Committee on the Environment.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on the Environment reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on the Environment, to which is referred Bill Number 230127, entitled an ordinance amending Section 20304 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Compensation for Members of Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Councils by revising the compensation for members of the Environmental Justice Advisory Commission. Respectful reports that is considered the same, and returns attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 230127.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 230127. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee, and our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. A note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rule have been deemed to have had a first reading. Those bills will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar today, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being brought up from second reading to final passage calendars today. Numbers 230311, 230313, 230314, 230315, 230150, and 220969. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you very much. Before considering these resolutions and bills, we will consider our public comment session. It will go as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendar for possible action at today's session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already done so, you may sign up at the table outside of the council chambers with the Sergeant of Arms. Once you have signed up, you will be called in order in which your name appears on the sign-up sheet, and today we have ideal circumstances, so we will have three minutes to speak. However, this time may vary from session to session based on the volume of speakers. In order to be fair, all those wishing to speak, though, we do intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. When you see the green light on the podium, it is your time to speak. When the lights turn yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks, and when the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, can you please call the first name on the list?
The first speaker today, Mr. President, is Lynn Landis, commenting on 210913.
Good afternoon. I'm Lynn Landis, founder of WildFoodies.org and HelpAlertPhilly.org. I'm speaking on behalf of Resolution 210913, authorizing city council to retain legal counsel to file a lawsuit to require the administration to implement and enforce the Healthy Outdoor Public Spaces Act, or HOPS for short. Its aim is to end the use of toxic pesticides in public parks and on public grounds, but instead, the mayor has allowed Parks and Rec to use toxic pesticides anyway. So why hasn't city council passed this bill and taken the mayor to court? If council doesn't take the necessary steps to enforce the laws that city council has passed, then council has violated its own oath of office and contributed to the growing reality that Philadelphia is a lawless place, and certain highly-placed city officials can do whatever they want. It is particularly frustrating to see how needlessly and carelessly these toxic pesticides are being sprayed, basically along the roads and into the tree lines of Fairmount Park. One of my favorite bushes on Lemon Hill, the spice bush, was completely destroyed by the spraying last year. As I give educational tours in various city parks, I have to warn my tour members that the city does spray pesticides. They are always aghast when they hear it. This is a Democrat city, and they assume that since Democrats support environmental causes so publicly and enthusiastically, that the last thing a Democratic city would do is to use toxic pesticides. But in Philly, that is exactly what they do. Instead of using manual labor and mechanized equipment, Parks and Rec has opted for toxic chemicals that harm both people and the planet, as well as contaminate our drinking water. It's time for city council to do the right thing and take the mayor to court over his abuse of power and non-enforcement of city laws. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Kadidra Mattis, commenting on a resolution introduced by Councilman Thomas.
Morning.
Good morning. Oh, good morning. My name is Amelia Harris.
I'm Kadidra Mattis.
And I first want to give an honor to God for being here. We establish Annual Afro Day at our school. And basically, it's just a day where we wear our hair as is and celebrating Afro-centric hair. It started in class, in Ms. Ridge's class, in Northeast High School. We were just talking about how we want to feel comfortable wearing our hair and being ourselves, and how we have been judged and how we've been treated when we wear our natural hair. It is important that everyone feels comfortable being their authentic selves, but more importantly, Black students, because for so long, we've been told that our hair is unkept, that it's unprofessional, that it's all these things, but it's not any of that. It is beautiful. Black is beautiful in any shape, any shade, in any form.
I feel like this is important for Black students and Black people as a whole, because as a community, we tend to put ourselves in a box of what Blackness should and shouldn't look like. And we try to change ourselves and change how we look to fit Eurocentric beauty standards without realizing the beauty that we are naturally born with.
I'm so grateful to be here, to be able to represent people that look just like me. And I'm just so grateful that I'm allowing, inspiring people to be their authentic selves. Thank you guys for having us.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Ogbonna Higgins, commenting on 210913.
Morning.
Hey, great morning, everybody. This bill was written to promote a healthy environment that protects the public from risk of toxic herbicides by prohibiting their use on all city-owned or used public grounds, including, but not limited to, parks, trails, recreation centers, and playgrounds. This is a lawsuit that definitely should be implemented, but there are some other possible lawsuits and issues that should be considered. As you know, not only is there an environmental issue with this bill, but what about the issue of our environment as it relates to crime and violence, as featured in today's inquiry? What did Philly's 22 million anti-violence grant programs buy? My question is, how was money funneled into nonprofits that were not prepared to manage it? Were they friends of yours? Were they family members of yours? Are you telling me that this body is not intelligent enough to identify those who are capable? You actually awarded grants to groups with no board of directors or employees? According to the inquiry, one-third received amounts larger than the previous year's operating cost. One in four didn't supply audited financial statements while others provided outdated tax forms. This is according to the inquiry. Our city is suffering from more, much more, than crime, violence, murder, and environmental issues. It is obviously suffering from a corrupt and ineffective council as a whole. Effectively, many of you have blood on your hands. I want to know, I want to let you know that if I, or when I, am sitting there, there will be oversight over issues like this. There is no way in the world that these issues should be going on when we have an epidemic of crime and violence in the city of Philadelphia. Have a great day.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Judith Robinson, commenting on 220865.
Good morning, you all. Queen Judith Robinson here to again ask for your attention. Regarding 220696, which is about historic preservation, it's very important in every neighborhood. 221015 regarding tax abatements. We need to be clear what we're doing here because we're not getting a return on our investment. So then 220865. So follow me, you all, please, because I don't have much time. So when we ask for you to represent us, our council people, we don't act that you dictate for us, to us. You know, we're part of the process. So, you know, I got 30 years of real estate behind me. Ain't nothing going on regarding land in the city of Philadelphia that I'm not paying attention to. I'm an avid reader, I love that, okay, and a researcher. So let's not be disrespectful of the people who have given you a long, long, long history of support and a salary and a pension for those of you who are leaving soon. So please, let's be respectful. The book that I'm sending around is a follow-up on my last testimony. Back, you all, a long time ago, poor Fahim Charles. Murder's no accident, but we had Blueprint for a Safer Philadelphia. I go all the way back there. I went and purchased this book, you all. Please take a copy of it. Make sure you get a copy of it, a snap of it, you know, how you all do. And then get a copy of it, because it should be part of your public policy. That Black woman came here, Dr. Deborah Stitt, Paltrow Thitt, and they ran out of here before she could get the whole program going. She talked about mental health and murder being a public health problem. But we didn't follow through all those years. That's why I was so irate. And I continue to be so ticked off every time another one of our children are murdered. She could have saved a few, but we didn't, you know, pay attention all those years later. So regarding the budget, I want to make sure we're proactive, that we're giving money to where it should be. We're talking about housing. We're talking about preventive safety, not victims. You know, we can do a lot of victim game playing, giving people based on sympathy. And we all are sad every time something happens. We need anger management. We need those dollars to go truly in Parks and Rec, not be diverted by these different agendas. You all gave $7.6 million, talking about tangled titles with no stipulations. I ain't gonna level and let you off and get that one as we talk about budgets, because it's totally out of order. In that regard, you know, you got to make sure that you're focusing on our children. Who can get the job done, I think, is the most important criteria that should be used, which we can determine that because we know what is needed for our youth to get them some correction. We must be clear as it relates to these budget hearings. We so busy fighting fires uptown, we can barely get an opportunity to come down here before you and tell you what we want in that budget. So I'm gonna continue to talk about the budget until June. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, that concludes our public comment session. And we will now move to our calendar on our second reading and final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 230311. Hold on one second, Mr. Decker. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
If I could ask for personal privilege
Absolutely.
to, before our calendar starts. We have a delegation here today. There's an event in Philadelphia. It's also a coordinated similar event in Washington, D.C. It's for the Ukrainian anti-war effort. We've had Bishop Luke Zoba here twice. He gave our invocation once and came in with some high-ranking people from Ukraine. And he has 20 delegates here today from many different countries. And I'd like to welcome them and to Philadelphia and show our support for them and thank the bishop, our own bishop of the Ukrainian church here.
Please stand.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you. We stand with you. Please continue to struggle. Thank you, and thank you for being here today. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 230311.
A resolution authorizing and ratifying Council President Clark's participation on behalf of and as a representative of city council in all proceedings relating to the decision of the zoning board of adjustment with respect to 1600 East Burke Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 230313.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 3418, 3420, and 3422 Kensington Avenue, located in the 7th Councilmatic District.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Lozada.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 230314.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2032 East Boston Street, located in the 7th Councilmatic District.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Lozada.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 230315.
A resolution renaming the 700 block of North 39th Street, Honorable Charles L. Durham Way, to honor the life and legacy of the late Common Pleas Judge, civil rights leader, community advocate, and Philadelphia city council member, the Honorable Charles L. Durham.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gardier.
Thank you, Council President. Before I move for the adoption of the resolution, I'd like to speak for a few minutes about Judge Durham's legacy. Charles L. Durham was born on October 12, 1924, in West Philadelphia. After graduating from Philadelphia Public Schools and Temple Law, he began his storied legal career in the Philadelphia District Attorney's Office. After leaving the DA's office, Judge Durham set up a legal practice in his native Manchua. During this time, he played an integral role in advancing the rights of Black Philadelphians, traveling to serve as legal counsel for the Mississippi branch of the NAACP during its 1963 voter registration drive. Later in his career, Judge Durham sat where we are now after his election as a city council member in 1967. Judge Durham was a member of council's first Black caucus and fiercely advocated for quality of life improvements, sponsoring legislation for streetlight improvements that would go on to illuminate the city. Following his time on council, Charles Durham was appointed to the bench in Philadelphia's Court of Common Pleas in 1974 and remained in this role until his death in 1991. It is a privilege to recognize the legacy this champion of civil rights and model of Black excellence by renaming the 700 block of North 39th Street in Judge Charles Durham's honor. And as we near the end of budget hearings for fiscal year '24, we are still fighting to give working-class Black and Brown neighborhoods their fair share of city services, something that Judge Durham fought for in this exact room more than half a century ago. I hope that in addition to the street renaming, we will honor this former colleague by enacting a budget that gives communities like Manchua the municipal services they deserve. I would like to thank Mr. Jim Brown from Manchua for leading the grassroots effort culminating in the street renaming. I'm grateful to Mr. Jim Brown for stewarding Judge Durham's legacy and for everything he does for Manchua's young people. And with that, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 230150.
An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2023 from the General Fund and the Grants Revenue Fund, Certain Royal City Offices, Departments, Boards, and Commissions, to the General Fund, the Hotel Room Rental Tax Fund, and the Grants Revenue Fund, Certain Royal City Offices, Departments, Boards, and Commissions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilman Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gardier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Harity.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lozada.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman Phillips.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Vaughn.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes are 14 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present, voting affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 220969.
An ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to accept a historically designated building from 2,000 Arch Associates, which will move and reinstall the building on city property.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Councilwoman Bass, did you need to be recognized?
No.
Oh, for the next one. Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilman Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gardier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Harity.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lozada.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman Phillips.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas. Councilwoman Vaughn.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes are 14 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present, voting affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution authorizing hearings in the Committee on the Environment to evaluate the environmental justice impacts of the city's waste management practices and potential alternatives to the city's contract with Covanta Delaware Valley LP. Introduced today by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
A resolution honoring and congratulating the champions of the week, the students of Northeast High School who established Afro Day when students wear their hair naturally to eliminate the historical stigmas associated with Black hair.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to take a couple moments to talk about these phenomenal young people. Both of them are students at Northeast High School. As we heard from them, they created the Afro Day after a do-now-spark conversation about hair by their teacher, Mrs. Ridgway, and that's in their African-American history class. One of the quotes from the young people, "You have to learn to love your hair, because if you don't, who will?" I used to be so insecure about my Afro, but now I got too much confidence. Y'all can't stop me. Can we have both of the young people stand up and give them a round of applause? Back in, back in 2020, this council body passed a resolution introduced by then-council member Sherrell Parker. And that resolution essentially banned natural hair discrimination. While we have legally banned natural hair discrimination socially, we still have a lot more work to do to make people feel comfortable in their own skin being who exactly it is that they want to be. So it's an honor to know that the next generation is already taking on this task, and I emphatically move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Phillips, did you need to be recognized? No?
I just wanted to note really quickly, thank you, Councilman Thomas, for bringing these young women to our body today. And I just think it's really important that the city of Philadelphia continues to uplift our young people, because self-confidence is a huge issue in the city of Philadelphia among young people. Oftentimes, a lot of our youth, in the times that I've worked with them over years, they get distracted because they're trying to be someone that they're not. And so I just want to applaud this initiative and just simply say, this is amazing. I love the fact that these women who came here today, as well as any other women, men who are also taking part of this, are saying that we appreciate ourselves, and we need to make sure other folks understand yourself is valued and that you need to continue to inspire other people to understand the importance of self-confidence. So thank you so much, Council.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Vaughn.
Good morning, everyone. Councilman Thomas, thank you for this legislation as well. And, young ladies, you are beautiful the way that you are. As an African-American woman that has been tall and full-bodied all my life, I did used to get teased and ridiculed in school, and it wasn't until I decided to identify myself as 362436, a brick house, and embrace my natural hair, that I made it popular for a lot of people in my life. So continue the good work that you're doing, and always remember, you have to see yourself beautiful before anyone else will recognize your beauty.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
So I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second all, in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and motion passes. Thank you very much.
And a resolution authorizing the committee on education to hold hearings investigating the use of an independent authority to bond and manage the school facilities modernization that safety calls for and students, parents, teachers, and communities deserve. Introduced today by Councilman Thomas.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second all, in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the many public servants of the city of Philadelphia and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and declaring May 2023 Public Service Month in the city of Philadelphia. Introduced today by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I'm hoping that my colleagues will join me next month in celebrating our great government workers, both on the city, state, and federal level. We have a lot of people who have been the backbone of this city for a long time, especially during the pandemic. In the spirit of continuing to honoring champions of the week, which is something that I've done since I've gotten in council, our focus next month will be city employees, state employees, federal employees, those public servants who wake up every single day and look to move government forward, and we want to recognize them and honor them. So I again emphatically move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved. Second it, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is emphatically adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the committee on commerce and economic development to conduct hearings regarding supplier diversity initiatives, including Philadelphia anchors for growth and equity. Introduced today by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second all, in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution welcoming the Golden Rule Peace Boat to Philadelphia. The Golden Rule Peace Boat is a sailing vessel that is touring the U.S. to promote the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. Introduced today by Councilman Squilla.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly. Second all, in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our calendar for today, and it is time for our speeches. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? And speeches on behalf of the majority, chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to remind all of our colleagues and team members in council that today, after council session, we will be hosting